And each council member is paid an additional stipend of thirty dollars for attending the Housing Authority meeting and fifty dollars for attending the Finance Authority meeting. All right, so at this point, prior to us opening up the meeting, we're going to go into the invocation followed by the flag salute. I will ask Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco to lead us in an invocation. All right, thank you. I'll ask everyone to please stand that are able to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and all those who follow your head. Heavenly Father, we ask you to watch over our city and watch over our state and our country. As mentioned this new year, bless all those men and women, our police officers, our firefighters, and men and women in the armed services that are protecting our country. And all those people have been impacted by a lot of uncertainty and those that have been impacted by a lot of natural disasters that are impacting our country. I ask you to...
Amen.
Amen, thank you. At this point, we'll place the flag, place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Thank you very much. Okay, at this point, let's go on roll call before we go. Madam, we've got City Clerk, let's go into roll call. At this point, we're going to have our City Treasurer, Maria Contreras, go into roll call.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Councilmember Cruzbaca?
Here.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco?
Here.
Mayor Patem, Susan Rubio?
Present.
Mayor Manuel Lozano?
Present, thank you very much. All right, at this point, I'd like to close on behalf of three individuals. We're going to dedicate the City Council on behalf of these individuals so that their names are recorded as part of the City Minutes and the history of the City Ballpark for 2017. The first one, a good friend of each and every one of us here, Guadalupe Salina Sanchez, was born on December 5th, 1929, in Mission, Texas, and was at eighty-seven-year-old resident. Ms. Sanchez was an active member of the Julie McNeil Senior Center for the past twenty years. Ms. Sanchez enjoyed senior trips and socializing with the seniors before lunch. Ms. Sanchez's conversations revolved around her beautiful green plants and her rare coin collection. Ms. Sanchez was a very active member and lived in the City Ballpark for fifty-six years. She will be missed, a dear friend of mine, a dear friend of many of us. Both her and I had two things that were in common. For one, we used to talk about, she was born in Mission, Texas. I was born in Bronzeville, Texas, and I think the unique thing, she was born the same year my mother was, 1929, and she was also born in the same city in Texas that my father was born. So our deepest condolences goes out to the family. They had a beautiful funeral services for her. I was able to attend on behalf of all the council members and opportunity to speak. I believe some of the family members are here. My condolences, you could stand up to the family members that are here. You could just stand up so we recognize. So I want to thank you very much on behalf of the City Ballpark, on behalf of all the City Council members. Your mother, your grandmother, your great-grandmother, leaves of legacy, as I stated there, of compassion and care for so many hundreds of seniors that she literally touched. And I will truly, as all of us will miss her as well, so today, her name will be added as a part of the City Minutes for the City Ballpark. Thank you very much. The next person we also have is Jesse, actually known as Josie Coria, a good friend of ours for many years, also born in 1929, neighbor of ours for Maria Contreras and I. Her and her husband have been extremely active in the community for many, many years. We'll miss her at the concerts. They were always there at the concerts together. Attended the services with her family members as well, and she will definitely be truly missed. I would always see her early in the mornings, walking down Willows or walking down Ballpark Bedillo Street as well. So our condolences goes out to all the family members of this beautiful family. And the last one that I also have is Linda Gonzalez, a dear friend of mine for many years, born in 1957, also born in Bronzeville, Texas, same place as I was born, and came here to Ballpark, I believe, in the mid-1960s. So our deepest condolences goes out to her and all her family as well. These are all three beautiful individuals that partook in the City of Ballpark for many, many years. So our deepest condolences goes out to all the families. So we're able to get the addresses for to our City Clerk, who will send you the letter on behalf of the city. Thank you. All righty. Councilmembers, yes?
Yes, if I may.
Vice Mayor, excuse me, Vice Mayor Susan Rubio.
Thank you. Well, first of all, we haven't had a meeting since New Year's, so happy New Years to everyone. And yes, unfortunately, at the end of the year, we saw a lot of passing, you know, not only our friends here in Ballpark, but a lot of celebrities. And so it's just, you know, time to reflect and make sure that we take care of one another. You know, my condolences to all the families that lost someone. And of course, I think we have one of the best senior centers in the entire San Diego Valley. We have, you know, very active community, and every time we get together, we talk about how sometimes they outdance us, they outwork us, and they're really active, and so we're going to miss all of them. So thank you, Mayor. Also, I want to just recognize that Martin Luther King Junior Birthday, there was a lot of celebrations around town, and just want to thank, you know, City of West Covina and LA County and all the celebrations out there. I mean, it sure gives us something to reflect on, you know, all the hard work that he worked towards, you know, more peaceful society. So we should all remember that and really embrace the legacy that he left of taking care of one another and making sure that we take a moment to look at our neighbors and say hello once in a while. Thank you, Mayor. Have a good day.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Susan Rubio, at this point, Councilmember Cruzbaca.
First of all, I want to extend my condolences to the families that lost loved ones. It's very difficult always, but especially during the holidays. And my condolences, you will be missed at the Senior Center. Everybody has such a great time there. In fact, there's a, I guess there's an exercise challenge that will be starting soon, which is going to be very nice to see everybody out there working out and see who's going to end up winning the challenge. But also, we are entering a new year. Happy New Year to everyone, and also a new administration as of Friday. And being that I'm the senior up here, I want to remind everyone to not take for granted what a lot of us have fought for, and to understand that we need to keep moving forward. We can't give up regardless of what the rumors may be or whatever has been said, because our voices do mean something, and never forget that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cruzbaca. At this point, Councilmembers, not, no further. Yes, Councilmember...
I just want also my condolences to those family members that have passed away. And I know that Christmas is always a difficult time when our loved ones have passed away. But also, I just want to recognize the Sanchez family and Rita Sanchez, who's, we could stand up real quick for a minute. She's a good friend of mine. Actually, her and I were in karate. I just hadn't seen you a while, but back in, or younger, and just good to see you. So, and sorry about the passing of your grandmother, but good to see all of you here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Thank you. Let me go ahead and offer my condolences as well. I know that when the mayor, you know, gave condolences on behalf of the council, but, you know, we just want to celebrate their lives and thank them for being such wonderful role models in our community. You know, when we see them out, when we see the seniors and we see the families, and, you know, clearly you're here several generations in Ballpark, and that is always so inspirational. And, you know, we just want to thank you for your contributions here in our community. And when we lose our seniors, it is very sad. We've lost some very special people, but I also want to celebrate just what they have contributed to our community, and it's been very positive. The energy that they bring to this community, it passes on through the generations, and it's something very special. So I wanted to acknowledge that and thank you for it.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Susan Rubio.
Since we're on the theme of seniors, we have our prom king and queen behind there. Can you please stand up? Separan la reina y el rey. Vamos a darles una, I'm sorry, un aplauso. These were our senior prom queen and king this last year, so now that they're here, we should be honoring them as well. Thank you for being here.
Mayor?
That's us. Yes, at this point, yes.
I just want to share that today at the WQA Water Meeting, that Ms. Munoz from La Puente won her position for the City with the Pumping Rights.
Oh, wow.
She beat Margaret by one point.
Wow. It was that close?
And she got twenty-five, yes.
Wow, that was very close. Oh, okay. Thank you for bringing that up. Yeah, one vote does really matter, absolutely, that's correct. All right, so at this point, we have a presentation that we have here, provided in recognition, excuse me, the proclamation, recognition of the City's Southern California Edison Corporation for the Streetlight retrofit program completion by Mr. John King, who's also the council member of the City of Covina. Thank you for being here, honorable council member as well, besides your second role here from Southern California Edison. Yes, sir?
Well, I'm pretty sure Southern California Edison might say it's my first role.
All righty, got you covered.
... City Mayor and staff. It's good to be here tonight. Thank you so much. I wanted to just very, very shortly to you that, as you know, you entered into an agreement with Southern California Edison here last summer. It's the very first community in Southern California...
And all of our, oh, sorry about that. So my greetings again, now that you can hear me. You were the very first community to enter into an agreement with Southern California Edison to retrofit your lights, your streetlights in your community. And I wanted to report back to you that that project has been completed. It was done right at the end of the year, and we changed out roughly twenty-eight hundred streetlights in your community, all to brand-new LED technology, so light-emitting diode technology, very, very energy-efficient, saves roughly half the energy, so it reduces greenhouse gases, has much, much better light quality, so it's, the visual acuity at night is far superior. And across our territory, we're expecting to see cities follow your lead in changing out those lights. So we really wanted to thank you for that. It's good news for the city as well, because over the next twenty years, you can expect to save somewhere in the neighborhood of three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars on your light bill and about sixty-five thousand dollars every year after that. So it's a good technology, it's very mature and well-done, and your streets look great right now. I got to drive around town last week a little bit and take a look at some of the finished product, and it looks very, very nice. So I wanted to simply say thank you, congratulations, let you know that the job is finished, and we're very, very pleased that you were the very first to enter into our, it's called LS1 Option EQ, and we were glad to be able to finish that job up for you before the end of last year.
And I just want to say, Mr. King, I want to thank you very much. It's major difference, and everyone's complimenting that as well.
Good.
You reported the total of how many were changed out?
About twenty-eight hundred lights.
Twenty-eight, twenty-eight hundred?
Yes.
Wow. And a span of how much time? I'm not curious.
We finished, we swept through your city in about three weeks.
Three weeks, wow.
So we had several crews that were working all day long, every day. I came out and visited and saw them in action a couple of times, and they were literally about five minutes at most for each light. They were really moving right through town. We actually found, I told Shannon, we found a couple of lights that were missed. We've gone back and repaired those now, or not repaired them, replaced them now. So barring any others that we might happen to find, I think we caught every single light. So it should be all finished up.
All right, thank you. Yes, Councilmember Cruzbaca?
I just want to thank you as well. I was, I had told Shannon when the lights, I live on a corner, and it was, there was one side that was very dark at times, and cars had been stolen from neighbors and so forth, and what a difference those lights cover, such a huge area.
Good.
And it's actually seems like daylight out there now, you know, when I walk in the evening. So thank you so very much. It has made a huge difference. The neighborhood really, really is appreciative. So thank you so very much.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, Vice Mayor Susan Rubio.
Just out of curiosity, this is a curiosity question. There are a lot of cities that are resisting joining and also doing the retrofitting?
Mm-hmm. Actually, there's not a lot of cities that are resisting it. We've got some cities that were looking to purchase their streetlights, of which Ballpark looked at that initially. So we're still working through the process with some cities that are actually looking to purchase their streetlights. Out of our two-hundred-and-thirty-ish cities and counties across the, our fifty-thousand square miles, so big territory, we expect over the next year or so, we'll have agreements with all the cities that are not in the acquisition queue. All the remainder of those cities will probably be signed up for that. Right now, I've got about twenty cities that are signed up and in line, waiting to do the exact same thing that you guys did, and I think that's going to just expand as we go along.
Good to hear. Thank you for that information.
Mayor? And then, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco.
I just want you to know that the church that I go to, a lot of people notice the change and how bright the lights are, and I think a lot of them commented how that will help reduce crime and how just probably save energy a lot in our city. So just great to see that change, that our lights are being maintained, and that we're just doing a lot, a lot of improvements in our city. And we've done a lot of new street work, and then this new light work, you could see. And some of them, you know, I know that the other one was like an amber color.
Yes.
And now with this new brighter white light, it just, you could see a lot better. And I, you know, and I really like the change, so I think the community supports the change. So I want to thank you for you guys' efforts in lowering down, I guess, the new energy rate. LS1 is a lot less expensive, right, than the previous one?
It does save, so this, because of these new LED lights, it does lower your overall bill because of those. And, Mr. Mayor, if I may, the technical term for it is called a color rendering, but what these LED lights do is allow your eye to see better at night. The color is better, the light quality is better, so as drivers, as pedestrians, we can see so much better under these lights, so that makes them safer, they save energy, and it's kind of a win-win all the way around.
All right, thank you.
That's great, Mayor.
Thank you, yes. Councilmember Cruzbaca, then Councilmember...
I just have a question. I'm sorry, I didn't know that. Councilmember Garcia, is, could we put this announcement, this press release in the now so that people know why it's so bright out there at night?
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, this is Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Thank you. Well, good evening, so good to see you. I was just speaking with a resident today who lives on Stewart, who was talking about the lights, how she had walked out, and it was so nice to see that the street was well-lit. So it's nice to see you here on behalf of Edison, but I also wanted to acknowledge that as a neighbor, Councilmember John King, you know, he fought a very hard battle with cancer, right? And you survived last year. And I just want to acknowledge that. It's so good to see you here tonight.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I'm two years after a cancer battle.
Two years.
And throat cancer, never smoked a cigarette in my life, so just one of those things. And it was, it was an interesting time, but I can honestly say that the blessings of cancer far outweighed the challenges, and I couldn't be more thankful to be here today.
Well, we're so happy that you're here, and, you know, always good to see a neighbor.
Thanks.
And fight on.
Absolutely.
I'm sure you're watching that game, too.
Fight on, indeed, absolutely. That was the best Rose Bowl ever. That was good.
I agree. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Mayor, can I just say something?
Yes, absolutely. Councilmembers, Vice Mayor Susan Rubio?
It's just me.
Oh, Council, sorry. Our City Treasurer Maria Contreras?
Mr. King, I just want to tell you that I'm a creature of habit. You know, they cut down the tree in my house, I didn't even notice, I'd just go in, and I'm just so used to everything, you know? But my husband is a retired Edison employee, and yesterday, we were coming down the street, and it was dark, and he pointed out how they changed the lights and the difference that he has made.
Yeah.
So now I notice all the lights are really bright.
Now, as you drive around, you'll notice them now that you're aware of them. And for whatever it's worth, you were done far before Covina was done, so.
All righty. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Have a great night.
Thank you very much. All right, at this point, I want to go into the public communication. Anyone wishing to speak, approximately three minutes.
Hello, everybody. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
The nature park, they got a dirt pile taller than a house. I don't know what this contractor is doing. You as the Park of Recreation Director or whatever, and you also, you two people ought to get together and ask this guy if he knows what the hell is he doing. He's pouring cement thick enough for a tank to land on. Do you need eighteen inches of cement in that park? It's a nature park. It's not a god-darn airstrip. It's not going to hold a tank. You two people don't know what you're doing. They got a pile of dirt big enough to fill a canyon, it seems. What do you guys do all day? Nothing, I don't, I suspect. You should know better. You also. You people work for all of us people in Ballpark. You do not do that. I don't think, if you've been there twice this year, you've been there too long. They haven't finished the roof. They've been doing this for a year. The walk, they moved it from one position to another, didn't put nothing on it. Mother Nature's going to tear it apart. You didn't put no, nothing on it. It's just Mother Nature out there, she's going to tear it apart, the sun, the rain, and everything else. Also, the people that you have working there, I wouldn't ask the guy for a business card, he didn't have one. What kind of company are you hiring? Don't look like you know who you're hiring. Let me tell you. They left these rental equipment for two weeks set there, and they, I'm pretty sure the rental company didn't tell them, "Oh, you don't have to pay me, you can just let it set." Well, I'll tell you one thing, if I were a rental company, you'd pay for it for every day. What kind of people do you do? I know, look at Art, tell him he doesn't know what he's talking about. I'll tell you one thing, if you remove all that dirt out of that nature park, I'll call the State of California and tell them to come investigate you two people. They're got a pile of dirt there bigger than heaven, and you know what? They're pouring anywhere between fifteen to eighteen inches of cement. What are you guys doing? Yeah, you and you. I don't think you know what you're doing. A load of cement, and I guarantee you'll never tell anybody, how much does a load of cement cost? And that's what they pour in one section at a time. That's a lot of darn cement for a damn nature park. Don't you guys know what's going on, or you just give the job away and you say, "Oh, I hope they know what they're doing"? Well, you're doing a very poor job, especially both of you.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Put a waste of time.
Anyone wishing to speak, approximately three minutes. Good evening.
Good evening. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
I'll go in Spanish. Feliz Ano Nuevo. Kiva Ramírez, a resident of El Monte. I want to congratulate for the California Democratic Party, for the delegates, whoever the winners and those who ran. Unfortunately, I didn't run in that district, but I want to congratulate all of them who participated, and let's push forward our local communities and, you know, keep up the good fight. So that's all I have to say for that comment. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Moi La with Public Communication, approximately three minutes. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Maggie Rosco. I'm from an organization called WELL, Water Education for Latino Leaders, and I'm here to invite you to our Stormwater Collection Workshop that we're hosting on February 4th, excuse me, in the City of Industry. Some of you have attended our events and conferences previously, and you may be aware of the work that we do, but we wanted to come here and invite you in person because we really do appreciate your participation in these events. The workshop that's happening on February 4th, we're going to be talking about MS4 compliance, and we're going to have the NRDC, the NRDC there, the LA County Sanitation District, among other speakers, so we really hope you can join us for this event. I have some flyers here for you with more information on the event and also on how to register. As with all our events, there's no cost to attend, so we really hope that you can join us, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. If you could, hand it over to our City Clerk for further. All right, thank you. Moi La with Public Communication. Anyone else wishing to speak? Good evening. Thank you.
Been a while. Thomas Carey.
Hey, Thomas.
So you want to make this a sanctuary city? Do you realize what will happen? Any sanctuary city, the federal government will take your money away from you. They probably won't take it away from the schools, infect the kids with their school lunches, but they can take that money away for your projects and other things you have going. But be careful with that one. As for the, how Trump got in there, you could say that Gloria Aldrich helped him get in there, her parading her porn star, saying that he groped her and all these things. Why a month before the election? Why not three years ago or four years ago? Why then? Like a porn star is groped by everybody on the damn set, starting with the director. They've got first dibs. So, I mean, it's ridiculous. So anybody that was undecided at that point decided Trump was the better candidate. He's a rat in his own ways, too. Puts his foot in his mouth. I figured the fix was in, but I guess I was wrong about that. He's in there. You better learn to live with it, because he's going to be in there. And even if you get him out, it doesn't make any difference. Pence might be worse, because he's not going to tell you what he's going to do, he's just going to go ahead and just do it. As for the amnesty that they granted thirty years ago, that was supposed to be the end of it. If Hillary had got in there, they would have granted amnesty. That's what the people are upset about. The media will never report this, because you know how the media is, they're race-baiting us all the time, saying that everybody's a racist. They're the racists. They're the ones fanning the flames of these things, making the problems worse than they already are. You ever notice when the black people are committing crimes? And that, no race is mentioned. They never mention that, but when they're over there running from the cops, resisting arrest, they make sure they tell us they're black then, don't they? But when they're committing crimes, robberies, carjackings, there's no mention of race. There are your racists. As for Trump, I'll tell you, I crossed party lines and I voted for Trump, just like I voted for Pete Wilson thirty years ago. I was against the amnesty then, and I'm still against it now. It's nothing new for me. It's going to make some of you cringe, I'm sure, but you shouldn't be surprised. If you feed cats, if they come to your door and you keep feeding them, you'll have a whole yard full. If you keep granting amnesty and letting things go, it won't stop. We're already overrun with people here. As for criminals, they need to be deported. They're coming up here causing trouble, and if the family gets broke up, well, they should have thought of that before they got in trouble with the police.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate that. All right, Moi La with Public Communication. Please state your name. You have approximately three minutes. Thank you.
John Rios, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
One of the things that Mr. Luna had mentioned, okay, is that that park, starting with the roof, I'm going to start with the roof. That roof has never been finished, the eave in the top of it is still open, we're getting water in it. They have to tear that whole roof off again. There's water inside of it already, okay? The other thing is, like Mr. Luna says, we're not going to let a tank or whatever. Sam, you told me, there's that, that's why we're putting so much cement in there, because they're going to go in there and trim the trees and everything. You trim the trees maybe once every two years, some of them five years. You don't need that much cement. I have a friend that does cement, and we went in there, and he saw, he said, "My God." Shannon, what do you do during the day? You probably don't do anything. Do you go around the projects there around the city? The one over Ramona and Francisco, they've been going with that for over eight months. Started drive through there. A block over, going toward City Hall, that's another one that's, there are potholes right there that Tijuana is better than right here. In front of the Superior Market, right there, you turn, and there, there's potholes right there. But no, we went around the church, we went to other areas and put new pavement. The pavement that was supposed to be, have been done since July, Fraser, off the freeway, you guys haven't even started. The state already funded that. Where did that money go to? Is it in somebody's pocket or some? That's what we, as citizens, we want answers now. Last year, we were a little lean on you guys. We're not this year. Okay? You think last year was bad? Look out for this year. Okay? Like Manny told me the other day, he saw me on a, on a black car. "Oh, you're spying on us." No, I'm not spying or nothing.
All right, thank you very much. Good evening. All right, moving along with public communication. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Lawrence Shee, and I am here on behalf of LA County Supervisor Hilda Solis. I have a statement to read in regards to the resolution reports by, requested by Mayor Protem Rubio and Councilmember Baca regarding immigration and women. On behalf of LA County Supervisor Hilda Solis, I am, would like to read the following. Good evening, Mayor Lozano, council members, and residents of Baldwin Park. Please know that I stand behind you in full support of your efforts to protect the immigrant residents of Baldwin Park. Los Angeles County is home to about 3.5 million immigrants. That is more than any other county in the country. And now, perhaps more than ever, it is important that local governments do everything within their power to make these vulnerable members of our county feel safe. That is why I have led Los Angeles County through unprecedented actions to protect our immigrant communities, and it is for the benefit of all of our residents. As you may know, last week, the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors passed a motion I co-offered with Supervisor Sheila Kewell to establish a County Office of Immigrant Affairs. This office will serve as a one-stop shop where our county's immigrants can receive streamlined, coordinated access to appropriate services in their preferred language. Next steps were also outlined to further ensure that all county departments and public institutions will serve and protect every resident, and take steps to better prepare for changes in immigration policy that may affect immigrant children and families. Last month, following the results of the 2016 presidential elections, we began to lay the groundwork for a countywide strategy to provide protection to our immigrant communities. The DACA Task Force has already been converted to the County Immigrant Protection and Advancement Task Force, which will include representatives from philanthropy, labor, academia, advocacy, and immigrant rights organizations, and will be tasked with providing related recommendations as the Office of Immigrant Affairs gets underway. Again, I have received hundreds of letters of support from the community, members of the congressional delegation, state, city, and school elected officials throughout the region, including your city, and from businesses, labor, community, and faith-based organizations in support of my legislative efforts to protect our immigrant population. Your voices must be heard, and the needs of our immigrant communities must be met. So I would like to thank you, Mayor Lozano, Mayor Protem Rubio, councilmembers Baca, Garcia, and Pacheco, for your continued commitment, leadership, and support. I am confident that the immigrant residents of Baldwin Park are in good hands. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and thank you, thanks to the supervisor for us as well. That'll be at a discussion at the end of the agenda here. Thank you very much.
I will, thank you, Mayor.
Moving along with public communication, anyone else wishing to speak? Please state your name, you have approximately three minutes. Okay, see no further interest, and I'll declare the public communication. Go ahead, come on up.
How you guys doing?
Good, thank you.
Not going to say Happy New Year, because that's past.
Speak into the mic if you can, please. Thank you.
I'm not going to say Happy New Year, because that's in the past. Good, good evening. I'm not really sure what to say. I don't write it up or do anything like that. This brother that spoke to Ms., Ms. Solis, I met her personally, good lady. Maybe you should send her a message and, ask her why, ask her why teachers here in this district and in the neighboring districts are having to buy school supplies for their students? Why is, what does the lottery do with the money? I've heard that from many. My sister-in-law's are teachers. Another thing, you're talking about immigrants. That's, that's great. A census was done, I don't know how accurate it is. Mr. Mayor, you said what, 70,000 here in Baldwin Park?
Seventy-five thousand.
69,000 veterans out in the street, homeless. They're not illegal. That's another thing maybe Ms. Solis might want to look into. And I'm not a pot smoker, I'm sure there's a lot, but just one more thing. Oh, and another thing for this brother that said about the lights, I do a lot of walking, and we're not done with the lights. Baldwin Park is still in darkness. And I speak about the leaders here, too. Restoration comes from within. It's not just the change of the color of your hair, putting on a new dress, inside. Downtown doesn't look like downtown. You got the outskirts looking okay, but when people get to the inside, what do they see? Uniformity, maybe? There is some spots that look really nice. Money could be invested. You're building a park way out there, I, I went to, I couldn't find it, I found it. That's beautiful. What about downtown, Mr. Mayor? Speak to the, whoever owns the lands, because the guys, the people that are running the businesses aren't interested in making it all uniform, make it look nice, beautiful. They're just trying to make money and survive. Understandable. Makes sense? One more thing. If you bring in that, this lady just got her card, do some research, you bring in that pot stuff, or, then you better bring another team for these brothers that are going to be out there, because I guarantee you, it's gonna, a little fire is going to turn into a forest fire, guaranteed. You can't bring that into the city.
All right, okay, thank you very much, appreciate that. Thank you. So at this point, moving on with public communication, see no further interest, and I'll declare the public communication closed.
Can I address a few things?
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, just really quick, I'm not sure if Supervisor Solis' representative will leave, but first of all, can you thank her? She did have a forum for Know Your Rights, for this is for our community that's really concerned about, you know, what's happening, and it was last Thursday, it was very well-attended, and I think all of us were there, but please thank her. There's so many people that are confused about what's happening, and that was very informative. So again, on behalf of all of us, just thank her for coming out here and doing that, they were very thankful. And secondly, I know the gentleman mentioned the veterans, but I do know that Supervisor Solis has been very aggressive in combating homelessness. In fact, I believe our councilmember Cruz Baca belongs to a, a task force, and it's, it's something that they're dealing with right now, and they're taking steps to, to ensure that everyone has a home. So once again, Supervisor Solis has been very active in trying to combat that, so thank her for that as well. And just lastly, I want to thank you, this gentleman always comes and talks so beautifully upstairs, when we were in third floor and down here, we always appreciate your words. You're always very kind and very knowledgeable. Thank you for your words. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, we have, it seems like we've got a very short meeting, but go ahead.
Yeah, Mayor, real fast, I know, because we all want to get out of here for a change, we want to get here. But thank you very much also to Supervisor Solis. Yes, we attended the Know Your Rights, Conozcan Sus Derechos last Thursday, but I also want to thank her, because this is an issue where we, we need to let the people, educate the people as to what their rights are. Many of us have had questions about people that are naturalized citizens that believe that they will be deported along with their children. So this education is very, very helpful in order to get everyone to move forward. And about the homeless, on January the 24th, at 8:00 in the evening, behind Morgan Park is the Terry Muse Center, and those of you that haven't signed up, I'm sure that you can go there to sign up. We will be having a homeless count, which will also include some of the veterans and, and some of our homeless population that we have here in Baldwin Park that are transients between the many cities surrounding us. That is very important to do that, because there are, there are monies that are coming in to the different parts of LA County, and especially into the East San Gabriel Valley, Claro, to Pomona, that will include in, in trying to, to, to come up with resources to help that. So thank you very much, Gabriel, for coming here and, and speaking as always.
All right. Okay, I just want to, a point of clarification on several items. Number one, about the Walnut Creek Park, let me make it very clear, that park is still under construction. And yet, that mountain's going to be there, because it's part of the whole construction. Eventually, it will not be there. So I just want to say to the staff members over here that we're pointing at, I'm sorry that you had to put up with that, and just to let the audience know, the state of, well, the United States Constitution allows the First Amendment right. Anyone could come up to this microphone and invent anything they want. And unfortunately, that's what certain people do with no facts. It's like Trump says, what is that, fake news? And that's the reality that we're facing here, which may be popular in 2017. So I just want to make that very clear, and I want, I want to commend each and everyone, including you, CEO, as well. It's unfair that individuals get up here and just say whatever they want, but that's part of the Constitution to let everyone know that's here and you, that you could come up here and you could lie, and guess what? No one up here has any recourse. We cannot go after the individual that comes up here and literally comes up here and outright lies. And that's just the reality of it, but that's what makes this country so unique, and, and we obviously don't want to change that. But, but again, you know, I just want to clarify that so that everyone understands what, what, what goes on here, what the, and, and our sessions at times. So moving on, from that.
Mayor, I'm sorry, just have a quick comment. Just like to say that if we, we attended the Know Your Rights Immigration Forum, I think it was last week, very, very good forum, very informative, and all the councilmembers attended. But also just like to say, if we could bring some of that information and put it on our city website, and maybe on the, on the city newspaper, if we could have some of that on the now, to bring that forth to our city. Also, just like to state that our Public Works Director and our, our Director of Parks and Recreation are doing a great job at the park. I know we were there the other day for some holiday celebrations. You're doing a, an outstanding job, it's really looking good, so I encourage you to continue to, to move forward. Let's get that, that project done and, and finish it off, okay? So, thank you.
All right, all right, so let's do it.
Mayor, before we move into consent calendar, thank you, I just wanted to acknowledge our police department that, you know, there have been some incidents recently that they've been, you know, really on top of, and making sure that the public safety here in the City of Baldwin Park is, you know, is just, is strong. And so just want to say thank you. I know that there have been some incidents that have been even in the news lately. So thank you for your diligence and for working so hard. I also want to acknowledge that we have somebody here in, in the audience who is a product of Baldwin Park. If you would stand, please Assistant Chief, this is Jim Enriquez, and I just wanted, you know, to acknowledge him this evening as well, because our fire department is very much part of the public safety here in our community, and we, we really appreciate everything that they do. Thank you for being here, son of Baldwin Park, so just wanted to acknowledge you.
And also graduated from Ball Park High School, am I correct? We're both of you guys? Okay, all righty. Okay, so at this point, I'm going to go into a consent calendar. Councilmembers wishing to pull any item out? If not, at this point, I'm going to move to move consent calendar items one through five.
Aye, sir.
Second, any objections? See none, so move. All right, the next one that we're going to go into, the city council acting as a successor agency to the dissolved community development commission. So we have the approval of the recognized obligation payment schedule, ramps for the period from July 1st, 2017 to June 30th, 2018, administrative budget. So I'm going to go ahead and move for the successor agency. That is my motion.
Second.
Aye, sir.
Any objections? See none, so ready? Okay, at this point, we'll go over to the public hearing, which is introduced, ordinance number 1396, adopting the 2016 edition of the California Building Code, CBC, residential code, CRC, electrical code, okay, oh, okay, I'm being corrected something real quick, so, well, I'll come back to that one. So the plumbing code, mechanical code, and also the 2016 Green Building Standards Code, energy code, historical building code, and 2016 existing building code. So let's do the public hearing, I'll go back to the refinancing tag. At this point, bye-bye, take care. At this point, who's handling? Yes.
I'm sorry. Could we have a little bit of an explanation from staff before we go into the public hearing?
Okay.
On this, on item six.
Item six, of course.
Yes, please.
Amy?
Yes, yeah.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you. This item, every, every three years, the city considers and updates the building code. It's published in its entirety by order of the California Legislature and is based on the 2015 International Building Codes with state amendments. Pretty much every city, unless they write their own codes, adopt this in its entirety. Without them, there is significant liability, which is something obviously that we don't want here. I don't, there, compared to the last time we did this, there's very, very few changes, very minor tweaks. If there were anything really, really super significant, which there wasn't, I would have put it in the staff report. Since building is not my forte, I did work with our interim building official and infrastructure engineers, and pretty much what we have in the report, they concurred and were happy with it from a building perspective. So at this point, you know, I would like to recommend that you open the public hearing, and then following the public hearing, waive further reading by title only and introduce for first reading ordinance 1396, entitled in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Baldwin Park, California Repealing Chapter 150 of Title 15 and Adding a New Section, Chapter 150 to Title 15 of the Baldwin Park Municipal Code, Adopting by Reference Title 24 of the California Code of Regulations, specifically the 2016 edition of the California Building Code, the 2016 California Green Building Code, the 2016 California Residential Code, the 2016 edition of the California Electrical Code, the 2016 edition of the California Mechanical Code, the 2016 edition of the California Plumbing Code, the 2016 edition of the California Energy Code, the 2016 edition of the California Fire Code, the 2016 edition of the California Elevator Safety Construction Code, the 2016 edition of the California Historical Building Code, the 2016 edition of the California Existing Building Code, and 2016 edition of the California Reference Standard Codes, including all appendices as mandated by California Health and Safety Code, Section 18938.
Could you start back up at 150? I think I missed one. No, I'm just kidding. All right. I'm just, I'm just, all right, so let's go ahead and, at this point, I'm going to open up.
I just have a quick question for staff. Does that include all the solar, the new solar panels that are putting up? Does that include all that sort of work in there?
Yes, it does.
All right, thank you.
I have one more question. This is just curiosity for the future. Correct me if I'm wrong, so they are requesting that we implement a 5% on the electrical vehicle charging stations in every new building, correct? Is that standard, 5%?
Actually, I'm going to refer that to our interim building official.
Yes? 5% is standard across the board for most new. I see, forster with infrastructure engineers. Yes, 5% is typical standard across the board. Some communities may wish to enhance that through their local code to even increase that amount, but 5% would be the minimum.
Because the way I'm seeing it, the reason we're implementing these policies is that that's where the future is going to go, and I'm wondering if we should increase it. But I want a little bit more information in particular, because that's not my expertise, but just by way of example. I remember when the first iPhones came out, we had a particular charger, and as the, the phones evolved, they, they started changing the chargers. So I wonder if at some point we're going to be left with charging stations that they're not going to match? I don't know. Can someone educate me on that subject?
In essence, the charging stations may change in the future, but the code requirement to install that into the individual residence would not change. So the electrical, the electrical code would govern the amount of electricity and number of units that are being supplied by that.
Okay. So Amy, if you don't mind, harbor just the information, I want more information as to an increase on that number, just by way of information. I know, I know we have to pass the first resolution, right? The first reading, but by next time, I want to see more information of other cities, if they're going higher, and what areas those are, so I can explore, because I would like to see us go a little higher, if that's a possibility.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. At this point, anyone else? If not, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. So at this point, I will take all those that are in favor on this particular subject. Anyone that's opposed? If you're opposed, come on up. Thank you, good evening.
Hello, City Council, and everybody else from Baldwin Park. The building you're building on the corner of Mercedes and Baldwin Park Boulevard, is it a three-story building, or apartments, condos, or whatever?
No, this, this had nothing to do with it.
Hold on, hold on. Are these buildings that you're building, and especially the one you already built back here, where is, on the outside of those structures, a safety exit for a fire? Now, under the safety code, you have the elevators, then you have a stairs to come down. But what happens if these people can't get to the elevator or the stairs? What are they supposed to do? Jump out the window? Jump out the window? This is concerned, safety concerns on this.
Hold on, you're not addressing this. So I'm going to ask you, you're, you know, you're going to have to move on because you're not addressing, we're not talking about that.
I'm opposing because you guys have all these safety, safety regulations here. And what they showed here a couple last month, never showed any exits outside the building. And we hear in the news all the time that these buildings catch fire and these people can't get out of the building. Now, these safety codes should address this. Now, you have all kinds of codes here, but none of them, none of them address how these people can get out if they can't get to a staircase or however. You have no safety ladders coming out of the building?
I'm going to stop.
You know what I'm talking about.
You know what? I'm going to have to do, I'm going to have, hold on. Allow me to speak. You're going to have to get with someone on the side.
Do you give me three minutes?
This is, this is, hold on. This is, you're totally, totally out of the subject. You are totally out of the subject.
This concerns safety.
So I, I understand. That is not, that is not being addressed here. That is not being addressed here. This is totally, this is totally different.
Well, then you people need to address it somewhere. You, this is public information, sir.
So what we'll do at the end, once after, after it finishes, let's, let's, let's get a meeting over here. Uh, is it Amy? Who takes care of it? All right?
This is what I'm, I'm opposing this.
You're totally, you know what? I'm going to ask you, you're going to have to, you're going to have to stop.
Mayor!
You're just going to have to stop.
Please be quiet!
You know what? I'm going to have to ask you to leave. You're going to have to stop. You're out, you're definitely out of line.
I have 41 seconds to go and you're interrupting me.
I'm going to ask you to stop. I'm going to ask you to stop. I'm going to ask you to stop.
I am strongly advising you to be quiet.
You know what? I will need to escort it out. Not going to have any disruption.
God forced me to stop talking.
You're disrupting a public meeting.
It's my constitutional right to oppose you.
I'm not going to tolerate this. I'm sorry. I'm not going to allow you to, to, uh, to disrupt the meeting that way. You're going to have to exit. You're going to have to exit. I need you to exit.
Mayor.
Yes.
It's real simple. Instead of getting into a long discussion like this, I thought we were going to get out of here early.
Well, so did I.
The bottom line is, does the safety code include, and one of you could probably answer, does the safety code include, and I think he's referencing to that fire that we saw in the news, I don't know where it was, where they had bars on the windows and they couldn't get in to get the people out until like, I don't know what they did. But I think in order to stop this and not cause an argument, yes, this is totally off whatever it is. However, does the safety code for either old buildings or new buildings, does it address in case of a fire, will there be access to get people or whoever it is out?
This addresses any new construction as of January 1, 2017. You have to remember that the, the construction that Mr. Luna was referencing was done under the 2013 code, and it would not be able to be constructed without approval of the fire department. And that's where the safety and access all come in.
All right. Okay. So thank you. Go ahead. Let's move. So are you in, yeah?
Well, I'll just make this quick.
So you're opposing?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I'm opposing in the sense that, what about people that live in garages that don't belong in there?
My God. You know what?
I, I know what's.
Hold on, hold on. You're, you're definitely not, hold on, hold on. You're not addressing the subject. Okay? If you want those type of general questions, then we're going to have to go offline here and then you discuss it with, with the building department.
That's all. I just.
Okay? All righty.
People living in places they shouldn't be living in. And these codes have been around for a long time. Anyway, long before this updated version, it goes back, I don't know how far, but you got people living in places they shouldn't be living in. That thing that happened in Oakland, okay? There's a danger. You could be liable if you know about stuff that people are living in places where they shouldn't be.
Okay. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak? Oppose? Do you know for the interest, and I'll declare it closed. All right. So at this point, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion, uh, to pass the, uh, Ordinance 1396, adopting the 2016 edition of the California Building Code, CBC, Residential Code, CRC, Electrical Code, C, CEC, Plumbing Code, Mechanical Code, and the, and the 2016 Green Building Standards Code, Energy Code, Historical Building Code. So that's my motion.
Second.
And you have, who, motion? Amy, Amy? Okay. Who was the second?
Amy, Minnie, Minnie, Mo.
Either one. We said it together.
Okay. Well, we can, all right. So at this point, not any objections, see none, so move. All right. So we'll go over, back to the refinance tax allocation bond. Staff recommends the council acting as a governing body of successor agency approve and adopt Resolution Number SA 2017009 entitled, "A Resolution of the Successor Agency to the Dissolved Community Development Commission of the City of Baldwin Parks Approving the issuance of refunding bonds in order to refund certain outstanding obligations of the former Community Development Commission of the City of Baldwin Park, approving the forms and authorizing the execution and delivery of the, uh, the trust, escrow, uh, escrow agreements and, and bond purchase agreement relating thereto, requesting oversight, uh, board approval of the issuance of the refunding bond, requesting certain, uh, and at this point, I go ahead and make a motion for approval of the refining tax allocation of the successor agency.
Oh, you have questions?
Yes.
Go ahead. Yes, Councilmember, sorry about that. Yes.
I would like, I believe it's, 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 Rose, would you be the one that could explain this to us? What exactly is going to be done with it?
Yes.
Certification of the residents.
Yes, yes, yes. Currently, the successor agency have four outstanding bonds. And a couple months ago, we make recommendations to the city council and the mayor to, um, direct the staff to, uh, work with the financial advisor and work with the market to seek lower interest rate to see if we can find savings to refinance these bonds. After, um, the analysis and we, we find out that if we go out to refinance the bonds, it will save the successor agency about 1.8 millions for the next 14 years. In addition, and the successor agency no longer need to pledge the sales tax from the Panter Mercedes project, and which is about 400 to 500,000 per year, uh, which will go back to the general fund. And that's the, um, may things that we would like to refinance all this successor agency bond. Currently, the interest for these four bonds is between 5% to 7.6%. And we are looking, maybe we can get, uh, about 3.5% in that area. That's why we estimate there will be a 1.8 million savings in the next 14 years. And we also have our financial advisor, Susan, here in case you have additional questions.
All righty. Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else have any additional questions?
Nope.
Okay. If not, all right. Thank you very much, Councilmember Cruzbaca. So at this point, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion. I think it was seconded by Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco. Any objections? See none, so move. All right. The last, we'll go to item number seven, which is the reports of officers, consideration to renew the contract with California Consulting LLC Grant Writing Firm. Are they here? Okay. Well, you know, no, no, that's fine. I don't, unless we have questions, but, okay, this one, uh, council members have any questions?
I'll second.
Okay. There's a motion. I'll second. Any objections?
There's a motion.
There was a motion to, uh, approve the, which, item one, two, or three? Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco?
I'll make a motion to approve item seven.
Item seven, okay. Which also includes items one, two, and three. Uh, so I'll second. Any objections? See none, so move. Congratulations.
Mayor, I would like a request from, where, where is he? Oh, I'm sorry. I, I should have put my glasses back on. Um, could we, could I please, I know that we get frequent emails from you on updates as to the grants that you're applying for. Could you please sort of send us a refresher email so that we know what grants have been obtained and what you're working on? Because I, I'm sorry, I, I'm not, I lost track of that.
Yes, it is.
You can email us if you'd like.
Okay. No, um, I just want, very quickly, I do send, uh, um, just, um, I do send a report at the end of the month. Uh, so the last report was up to, um, December 31st. And I'll have a report, um, for the end of the month, so a monthly report. I also put together and I, I sent it to, um, to Shannon and, and staff, a calendar of all the grants that we can apply or considering apply for up, I think up until September, so we can look down the road, three or four months. Those are based on grants. There's some grants that come out continually, kind of perennially, and maybe they come out in May, they come out in June. So that's put on that list there. I will send that to you. I do have the December 31st report here, and I don't know what you have in front of you, but I'll send it. What, what I'll do is this week, I'll update it because that's been two weeks ago. And we're working on, um, we're working on several grants. I know the last grant we got, the, we got funded was the competitive, um, Los Angeles County Competitive Access Tree Planning Grant Program for 200,000. Um, so that will be going on your medians and your parkways. And we, we're waiting to hear on several other grants, which are urban greening grants. Um, so waiting to hear, and we're applying for some, um, other park grants and housing grants right now, working with staff. So, and, um, officer traffic safety grants also from the state. So, so I'll put that, I have, I have this, and this is for you now, but I can send an updated one up to this week for council, if you wish.
All righty. Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Cruzbaca, and thank you, the gentleman. All right. Uh, the next one that we have, request by Mayor Protem Rubio for council to discuss and consider, which every one of them are definitely, oh, did I skip? Did I skip?
Did he skip?
I don't think so.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay. All right. That's right. Is there a motion? No. No, Ricardo, we did. Yeah, we did. We did do it. We did do it. All right. I'm going to go ahead and read all the following, which I think are very powerful and definitely need to support by council member, excuse me, Vice Mayor, uh, Susan Rubio. Uh, A, the first one is a resolution urging the new administration to protect the names of Dreamers, who were given assurances that their information would be protected if they applied for temporary legal status. Two, a resolution urging the state of California to take a strong stance against mass deportation and remain steadfast in protecting the information of immigrants who applied for a driver's license under AB Assembly Bill 60, and were sure they would not be discriminated against, no question about their immigration status. Three, a resolution in support of Planned Parenthood that provides vital services to most of the vulnerable women in our communities, and to urge the new administration to continue funding to avoid women left without proper resources to receive treatment for a preventable disease such as cancer. These are excellent. At this point, I'm going to give the floor over to, uh, Vice Mayor, Susan Rubio.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm so sorry, there's so many.
It's okay.
But, you know, that just kind of speaks to the anxiety of our community these days, you know, with the new administration taking office. But one of the things that I do, um, you know, feel really strong about is education. And first and foremost, you know, the Dreamers who actually came, you know, out of the shadows to provide their information with the assurances that they would be given temporary status for them to have an opportunity to educate themselves and become productive members of our society. And so now they have this anxiety about that information being released. And, um, and because of that information that they provided, again, with assurances that it would be protected, now they may be deported depending on how the new administration, you know, decides to move forward with this item. So once again, I want to just make sure that we at least urge the administration to, to keep that information private, and we must protect, these are children that came to this country without their consent, brought over by their parents as minors. And, and once again, this is a conditional temporary status. Of course, if they get, once they get the education and meet all the requirements, they're offered, uh, permanent status. But the reality is that I don't think anybody's going to go away. And for me, an educated force in this community is a lot better than someone that doesn't have the capabilities of getting a job and, and being able to apply even to, to higher education. So the, I'm sorry, the, um, education factor for me is really important. And these children were brought over without their consent. And at this point, you know, if we gave them assurances that they would be protected, I think that we need to insist that their information be protected, Mayor. So with that, I would make a motion to pass this resolution.
I will second. Any objections? See none, so move. These are excellent, by the way, and the message needs to be very clear to our community. Uh, and, 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 you know, when, when you talk about immigrants, we're not just talking about brown colored people. We're talking about white, we're talking about Asians, we're talking about blacks, you know, that, that are here from throughout the entire planet. Then it's important for us, excuse me, don't interrupt me like that. Uh, so, uh, so it's very important for us to keep, to be mindful, and I'm glad you brought this up. And then the next one, I think that Cruzbaca sends a very strong statement, and I'll go ahead and read that, which is directly in the city.
There's one more, Mayor, in between there, if you don't mind.
What's that? No, no.
The second one, uh, the resolution, the second one about the AB 60.
Yes.
So we talked about the, uh, the Dreamers, which is, you know, the young individuals getting educated. But there's another portion, which is the AB 60 law that passed that encouraged everyone to get a driver's license. And just like we would hold anybody accountable that would falsely advertise something, we as Californians assured these individuals that their information would be protected. And it says it right on the, on the law that they would be, um, they would not be discriminated against or asked for their legal status. And now the threat of going backwards, I think we as Californians needs to, we need to take our word seriously. We offered their, them, um, the opportunity to get driver's license. And I think that a lot of people are divided on this issue, but I'll tell you, me as a a lot of people are divided on this issue, but I'll tell you, me as a motorist, and I'm sure many of you have gone into accidents where some individuals don't have driver's license or insurances, and, and I think it just makes our community safer if we're all insured. But, once again, Mayor, I think right now there's a threat of that information being released, and a lot of people being deported, and they willingly gave their information, and I think that we need to keep our word as Californians and protect their identity.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor. With that, I say, um, please, let's pass this resolution. Thank you.
Absolutely. All righty. Okay. So we're doing all three.
Did you, do I have a second on this one?
Yes, I'll second.
A second.
Any objections? See none, so move. Okay. Item number three.
And item number three is a resolution in support of Planned Parenthood that provides vital services to the most vulnerable women in our communities, and urge the new administration to continue funding to avoid women left without proper resources to receive treatment for preventable diseases. And I know, once again, there's misconceptions about what this funding is for, but when we look at our community, in particular Ball Park, you know, we have such a, a low-income community, and these women rely on these services for just basic care, uh, you know, pap smear, test screening, um, cancer screening-
And grants.